This conference will now be recorded.
And we are going to call this annual second homeowners meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at twelve oh six P M. Um, so, and we have another online presence. So we do have an agenda to roughly guide us through some of the topics that we thought might be talked about, but this really is a meeting designed for public comment and input from the public. So please feel free to raise your hand or jump in with comments and questions whenever, whenever you you would like to. But we will otherwise just go, go through our agenda. Is there any, anyone with anything pressing that they want to get off their chest?
I can't actually see if anybody raises their hand up there.
No, no one raises their hand. Alright, so the first, what is the first topic?
Fiber connect. Town Beach is still unlisted up here.
So the town beach, um, not much of an update. And it's not really an item for the select board, but people do bring concern sometimes to select board. Uh, but it has been getting a lot more use in the past few years. And the Park Commission, who has jurisdiction over the beach, is potentially looking into starting a pass system, like at the transfer station. And they're looking into the legality of it. It's complicated by the fact that the boat ramp was, was, um, created by the state back when the state built the dam on Bear Town Mountain Road in the seventies. And there was a agreement between the town and the state, um, to allow boat, the boat ramp and boat parking. So, um, I just put that in the agenda to kind of update you that that is something that the Parks Commission is working on, is potentially making a pass system for the town beach. Um, but the details of that and the legal questions have to be addressed. And that really is a Park Commission issue.
Okay.
But Colleen, did you have any?
I, I've noticed, you know, people are driving in bands of people. I actually heard from somebody that apparently even a casino in Springfield was suggesting that this was a lake good like to go to for people traveling. I mean, it's so, you know.
I agree, and, and we, we know that the Red Line Inn, for example, does that. And we're one of the few places in Berkshire County that doesn't charge for parking. Almost all the other great ponds do.
Right.
Um, which is, I think, one of the reasons people are coming here. But it's, it's kind of overwhelming our capacity, which is why the Parks Commission is trying to find a way to make a balance so that people have access to the lake. But, you know, um, it's just, there, there are tricky issues involved.
They're fine.
Yeah, for one thing, you, you can't, you have to charge the same to residents and non-residents if you're gonna charge.
It's a little confusing because I, this just came up in a conversation this morning. And someone said to me, well, it's considered a great pond, so you actually cannot restrict use of the waterfront.
You can't restrict the use. You can, however, charge for parking, which they do with every other great pond, right? Stockbridge Bowl, they do it in Lee, they do it in Pittsfield, like, you can charge for parking. Um, you just have to charge the same for everybody.
And, and really, I think what's extra complicated here is that agreement between the town and the state dating back decades.
Right, right.
Um, because of that requirement, that they were gonna build our dam, but they were gonna make a boat ramp that had to have public access. And they actually moved the beach onto Burr Pond. Um, so that is very much complicating the issue.
Right.
Actually, the boat ramp parking is not supposed to be used for the public beach at all. And potentially, based on this agreement, if the state knew that boat ramp parking is being used for swimming at the beach, that's actually not good. But anyways, the Park Commission is looking into it. They're learning more every week about, you know, working with town council. And, um, they did have a follow-up question, which I sent as.
Oh, good, I didn't know about it.
And, or they had some follow-up questions after the last Park Commission meeting. And they may, at some point, if the issue goes, talk to the town's council and get some advice. But, I mean, it really is just, it's the jurisdiction of parks, but.
I do wanna go on the record and say, maybe because I come from the West Coast, where there's still lots of open, free, you know, waterfront. And I'm a big believer in, you know, keeping shorelines open, not private. Without, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes. Frankly, that beach should be much bigger because it is a great, like, a great pond. You know, part of this is about, you know, enclosing a lake with private, with private access, frankly.
Right, but they're just, it is all, it's all privately owned, except for that one piece. So it's not, you can't retroactively take people's houses away.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, but in, in the sense that we, people without houses on the lake, in fact, are entitled to the use of the lake. So it's this double-edged issue.
I think, I think nobody wants to limit access particularly to Monterey residents. Um, I think the main issue is the number of non-Monterey residents that are using our beach, that are using our beach, using our parking, and actually, in some cases, preventing the residents from making good hits at the beach.
I, I have to say also bicyclists park their cars there as well. So it's kind of like, it's not just the beachgoers, it's, you know, the parking issues.
And there's boats and everything, but there are, if those of us who used to spend time regularly in the beach, um, and knew everyone on the beach, now go there. And I leave immediately because I literally, there's not a single face I recognize from town. If I go during the warmer part of the day.
The thing is, a lot of people can't afford, I'm thinking of my own family. My family would never have been able to afford a house around the lake, but they were fishermen. And I'm a big believer in giving people access. So, you know, it's kind of like, frankly, some of the, some of the spots across the way that are actually supposed to be for people with boat trailers are being used by beachgoers. My understanding was the spots across the way weren't actually for people with boats.
I'm not sure that anyone is really fully aware of exactly what the agreement is. And.
And that's a problem too.
And there, but there, the Park Commission is working on it. And I just, I thought it was worth acknowledging that the Park Commission is, is starting to look into that.
Okay, I would just hate to see it come down to only getting access to Monterey people.
No, I mean.
We can't, we never, we, there's no, it isn't actually legally possible.
Yeah.
Really, what it comes down to is how can we, um, I would say, moderate access so that it's accessible to everyone, but it isn't getting damaged by overuse, which it, I believe, has started to be.
Yeah.
Um, or that Monterey residents can't, who live here but aren't on the lake, can't get access because there's people coming from a casino.
Or, um, actually, I'm noticing that vans with people are showing up from wherever they're coming from.
Exactly, that, that's exactly what I'm talking about. It's not that I don't want them to have access to the lake, but I do think that people who live in Monterey are be able to have access to the lake also.
So I would, I, I know this is certainly a person should just take.
But I still have an opinion as a person, not even as a select board member.
Yeah, I do too.
Right, right.
It would be great to have access, you know, it'd be great to have, I know there's one bike rack there. Maybe, maybe more people could be biking to the beach too, if there were more, you know, we made it useful, people would, would want.
If you have ideas, talk to the Park Commission.
Okay, I didn't mean to belabor this. No, no, that's okay.
It's a, it's an interesting.
Do you want to talk about the school?
Yeah, so the next item, Susan's going to tackle the eight-town regional school district planning board.
So, um, for those of you who don't know, uh, we are part of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. There's also a Berkshire Hills Regional School District. That's the Great Barrington, uh, West Stockbridge and Stockbridge. Um, and there have been conversations about potential mergers for a long time. Um, and there's another one, it's been going on for a little over two years, I believe. That, so the eight towns, the five Southern Berkshire towns plus the three Berkshire Hills towns. And it basically comes because there's declining enrollment in, um, in all, in all the Berkshire County school systems, not just ours. And, um, that's making it harder and harder to have enough money to have enough programs to support the kids, or that's the contention anyway. Um, it turns out that pre-K and K have high enrollment for this fall in Southern Berkshire, but it's unclear whether that's a temporary blip or a change in the pattern. Um, but, so the, this group has been meeting, they have frequent meetings, they have a very accessible website if you're interested in finding out more about what's going on. There's some pros, there's some cons, but what they're essentially proposing now is that the high schools merge, um, and they would be building a new high school with, um, a lot of vocational training opportunities on the current Berkshire Monument Mountain site that would be big enough to potentially house both, all eight towns worth of high school students as well as accommodate kids that wanted to choice in specifically for the vocational programs. You know, there's a lot of debate back and forth about what that would offer, what it might take away, how we would use the properties that already exist and are extant and in good condition, um, whether it should really cost as much. I mean, there's an infinite number of things being debated, which I think are all substantive, but that's essentially what it is. And if you want to know more, um, it's pretty easy to get to their website, uh, which is, oh, I don't know, right here. Called eight, the num, digit eight, towns dot O R G. And they have all of their meeting minutes, all of it. You can go to any of their various subcommittee meetings, um, it's all ongoing and. But if it happens, it's probably gonna be on the all-town meeting warrant in May to see if the towns will vote in.
The only thing that I would add is, in addition to going to the website, you could look at the Monterey slash four minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, just a month ago. Um, and the video online where, um, the chair of the committee and one of the lead consultants came and met with the select board and some of our, and some residents in Monterey and probably had an hour, hour and a half discussion with them. So there's quite a bit.
And there were a lot of people here and a lot of good questions asked, right?
Um, unless there's any questions on the school district update. I, we have on the agenda Fiber Connect. Um, so I don't know, I think you may, you probably already hooked up with Fiber, yeah.
Although she's pretty slow, I don't know if that's a issue people have complained about.
Just less they, they had some service problem. I don't think it's them though, I think it's further downstream. Um, I think I just got an email about it, like, they've reached it, but I'm not sure how long it's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah, I wasn't even aware of the slowdown. Um, but just to update that, uh, you know, Fiber Connect has the contract with Monterey, which is a little bit older than two years now. Yeah, a little bit older than two years ago. And it requires Fiber Connect to reach almost all neighborhoods and all, and go by almost all houses in Monterey, except for Corrusheer Road, River Road, and a couple other single houses on outskirts of town. And as far as we know, basically, any neighborhoods that Fiber Connect hasn't reached yet, they're waiting on Verizon and National Grid to, uh, to approve make-ready, approve make-readies and actually move their wires, uh, so that Fiber Connect can string their wires. Um, but other than that, there's no reason that Fiber Connect, you know, shouldn't fulfill the rest of their contract.
Oh, and fiber availability, there's big backorder, there's.
Yes.
Big backorder, probably possibly as long as two years to get fiber.
Are you serious?
Um, it was so bad getting the fiber domestically that he actually placed an order to China, but.
Oh, the fiber itself?
The fiber itself, but he was concerned that when he gets that fiber heat, there's no way to know whether it will actually be up to spec. So he ordered it, but he may not be, when he gets it, he may or may not be able to use it.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, for, I think it was fifty months.
That's a serious supply.
I was like, two months ago, so maybe it's only forty-eight months now.
Yeah.
I would say that's a pretty big supply chain issue, yes.
Any questions about Fiber Connect from anyone on the call? Okay, if you, if you do have a, if anyone has a particular concern about my house or my road, we can look into getting an update. I know one of the big ones is Bear Town Mountain Road, um, where they're basically, where Fiber Connect says that now National Grid and Verizon have approved their make-readies, but they actually have to go and do them.
Right.
And that seems to be the story for, yeah, most of the neighborhoods that they haven't come onto yet. Uh, but if anyone has a specific concern, we can address that.
I do have one question, which may, I, maybe this isn't really a second homeowner issue, actually. And back for people with children, I mean, I remember fifteen years ago, there were a number of people, kids, who had to come to the library to use the internet because they have no internet connection. So are there any, you know, are there families like that who still in Monterey without any sort of connections that rely on the library for use, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, anyone on Bear Town Mountain Road or other roads that haven't been reached yet by Fiber, if they also didn't have D S L, um, would be in that.
I just wondered how many school families that.
I don't know, I remember.
No, no one that's been coming to us and complaining about it, other than the Bear Town Mountain Road people. So maybe they just got used, either they got used to using the library, or they've solved the problem.
They've solved the problem.
There are houses, though, that are excluded from the contract entirely on Corrusheer Road, River Road, and then a couple others. And some of those, at least one of those others has gotten it from Otis.
Oh, from Otis.
Um, because actually their house is on a road between, or that house is on a road between Tearingham and Otis. It doesn't really border Monterey, it's landlocked.
Got it.
Um, and we looked into, with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, potentially, uh, trying to get to a hundred percent of wiring the town, but it was basically gonna wipe out all of the Oracle funds. Because the reason why they're not included is because they don't make a lot of cost sense. And we tried to, you know, eliminate that as much as possible, but.
Alright.
Um, the next topic is the Green Park Ball Field, which is getting a lot of use today.
Yeah.
Um, and this is another item where it's really a, a Park Commission item, but it has come up with the select board. And basically, we have deferred, you know, any decisions and financial decisions to be made to the Park Commission because it's under their jurisdiction. Um, the most recent Park Commission, at the most recent Park Commission meeting, they did vote to spend the money to redo the ball field and get it in better shape.
They did.
Uh, yeah, uh, and then those minutes are posted on the website, um, provisionally on a, on a closer review of the Park Commission budget. But they did vote, and they are aware of the ball field, poor condition.
Okay.
Um, the transfer station, uh, Susan, do you wanna tackle the transfer station?
So, um, the transfer station's actually in pretty good shape. We, uh, we're really happy that despite the fact that Gold Farm had to stop accepting compost, we were able to find some, another Berkshire compost, they call, that are actually picking up the compost so we could continue to provide that. Um, and, uh, the only downside is that we don't get finished compost back. So we are encouraging people, if they want compost, to start composting themselves. It's always better to do it at home and not have to ship it anywhere. Um, we're in, we're, we were very forward-looking when, you know, the select board built the new transfer station. They planned for the mattresses, the mattress ban is about to go into effect as of November first, but we.
I don't know about this, what is a ma- mattress ban?
Uh, so the Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, that oversees solid waste, has been gradually, um, pushing towns harder and harder to get more and more out of the waste stream. The two, there's only two, all the incinerators have now closed. The remaining, uh, dump sites in Massachusetts are headed towards closure, at which point we'll have to be shipping all of our waste out of state because there's no new places cited, nor is there any other option for getting rid of it. So the only option is to try to reduce the amount of trash that we produce, which we should have been doing a lot, let's face it. So it turns out mattresses are like seventy, seventy-five percent recyclable. And, and actually usable, they can take them apart and use a lot of the components. It's not like you hear about, you know, bottle recycling is really useless because they're not really doing it. They actually can take it apart and use a lot of the pieces for other things. So they've now made a mattress ban. Clean mattresses should be disposed of through the mattress ban. Um, they go into a trailer that we've had on-site. We've been accepting mattresses and box springs for several years now, at least.
What's a clean mattress, what's a clean?
In other words, it, not one from, that got infested by rats, or you had a flood. And so, those just have to go in, into the garbage.
How would, how would, does the guy, do the guys at the, uh, transfer station expect them?
Do you just make the call?
Or are you just making assumptions?
Yes, if they see that it's, like, it, it's pretty obvious if you've got it. We're not talking about there's a stain on it because somebody had an accident. We're talking about like.
Grungy.
Really, like, if there was a flood and it was completely muddy.
Got it, got it, got it.
Or, um, or they were in a fire, or they were abandoned in a building and infested by rodents. Or, you know, usually if they're, or they got put in the back of a garbage truck, which isn't relevant to us really, but happens in cities.
Right, 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 I get you.
Um, and then, then at that point, they're no longer using it.
Correct.
So we've already been doing it, and we're on that ball. We are, um, in conversations, we just applied for a technical assistance grant to get help from the municipal assistance coordinator, who is a part of the Department of Environmental Protection, to look into whether Monterey should consider a pay-as-you throw system, which would involve, um, a sticker for whatever price, it can even be a free sticker, plus you have to buy the bag, so you're paying for the, you're paying for the bag. So you pay for each bag of trash. And it apparently has massive, we may have already gotten a bunch of stuff out of our trash, but even places that have had very successful diversion programs, like we do often see a twenty to forty percent reduction in municipal solid waste by asking people to pay more attention to what they're throwing out, which is essentially what the pay-as-you throw system does. So, you know, even twenty-five percent less trash is a lot, but forty percent is a really large amount.
Would you need to hire an extra person to monitor payment at the transfer station?
Um, they're not paying at the transfer station. The way this system works is you work with, there are several companies that do this. They actually, you choose a colored bag, and your bags are sold at local distributors. So like, at Car Hardware, Big Y, um, wherever you work out with, but a lot of the stores already do it. So people, instead of purchasing Vlad or Hefty or store brand, they buy Monterey ones that are color-coded to indicate that we're our transfer station. It makes it very easy for the people to transfer station because if you don't have the right bag, you can't throw it out.
Got it.
Um, you know, and there's always people who, it's difficult to make the transition, right? Um, they don't, they don't wanna do it because they're gonna have to put it in the regular bag and put it in a second bag, which they absolutely don't need to do, it's like standard garbage bag. You just have to change the way you're doing things. You can also have a structure where the amount you're paying for different bag, like, different size bags is different. So that if you have an older person, who's a single older person maybe, and not producing very much trash, they can get a very small bag and they'll pay less.
And, and, and the wherever it's, you know, in places where it's being used, is there an uptick in trash being thrown on the roadside?
Um, apparently not. Um, and the amount, as far as all the data we've gotten from D E P, um, there is very little evidence that the result of that is people dumping or even dumping other items, like things that wouldn't fit in a trash bag, um, that they might normally have to bring because most of those things are part of the diversion system anyway, right? So there wouldn't really be a reason. Every now and then, we get people who try to shove a piece of electronics they should be paying for to dispose out into a garbage bag. Um, it's hard to catch if it's in a bag.
There's always gonna be some of that.
There's always gonna be some of that, um, which is too bad because we actually get money back for electronics. But, um, it, it seems to have worked really well in most of the towns that have enacted these systems. Um, a lot of the money that's available to help you transition is geared towards towns that have municipal pickup. Um, but it, it's worked in a lot of towns that don't. Um, and I, for me, the main reason is environmental. Um, I do think it's fair to ask people to pay for the garbage. And I think the more you ask people to think about what they're throwing out, the less, the more they're likely to change their habits to produce less waste, which is the ultimate goal. We want, we not only wanna be paying for less waste, we wanna be making less waste because it's gotta go somewhere.
Do those towns do now have a campaign before then, after then, educating?
Yes, they do. So we're, we're in the earlier stage where we're just trying to determine, it doesn't make sense for us to do, if it does make sense for us to do, how would we transition to it? But we'd absolutely have to go to the town and ask. But we wanna have an education campaign beforehand.
Beforehand, yeah.
Because people change as hard. If people understand the value of the system, they're less resistant. And if you help them, if you figure out what their resistances are, you can sometimes address them before they even happen. So, yeah, we, we need a lot of support. And we're talking at least, I think, I doubt it would even come to an annual town meeting before twenty twenty-four.
I see, totally.
I, I could be wrong, we could, it could go faster than expected.
You're in the, uh, research phase.
Exactly, exactly, we're in the research phase.
Any questions about the transfer station?
Well, I'll add one more thing, which is, we continue to, um, we would love to see people, um, if somebody with good presentation skills wanted to contribute some time to keeping the swap shop looking great, we continue to be looking for volunteers with that particular skill set that's really good at organizing and making, you know, someone with like, sales experience that's really good at making things look spiffy would be great. We can't really find anyone that's willing to volunteer that time, but it is a skill set we could use.
Okay, so interesting. Um, someone, I talked to someone who said they would be willing to do it, I think, every Wednesday.
Wow.
Um, that's probably even enough, really.
Well, I think every day would be nice, even if it's not all the time every day, but at the end or the beginning to tidy it up would be nice. Uh, I need to follow up with them, um, but I, I just learned of that a couple days ago.
I mean, the desirability from my standpoint is, I think, one of the difficulties is figuring out how to organize stuff in a way that presents things nicely, but also makes it accessible to people. And once you have a system, you can often keep the system. But there's a lot of varied stuff in there, and I, I consider myself a pretty decent organizer. I don't feel like I could tackle that. Someone who had that skill and could really figure out what we need and where to put it, if you could get the system operating, maintaining it would be a little bit easier if the system were really clear.
It's not too bad.
No, it's not terrible, I just think it could be better. And I think that if it was, if those, that system was very clearly delineated, it would be easier to maintain even when the original organizer wasn't always there.
Well, and I'll follow up with this resident who said that she would be willing to do Wednesdays. And, um, there was someone else who said she may already be doing Sundays.
Oh.
Um, kind of just informally going in and kind of reading out things and see if we can come up with some kind of a system.
Right.
I'm pretty sure, I, I could be wrong about this, there was always this issue of, you know, Beth and.
Dave.
They, you know, were insistent that people check with them first, which I agree with. To make sure, I'm not, I think some people may, there may be people out there who don't realize that they have to do that. The guys are busy, they can't, so I'm not sure we're that distant, but.
Well, that was one of our, one of our reasons behind going for two transfer station tenants rather than one. We figured that when, when Beth and Dave left, we considered going with one potentially. And one of the reasons was that we thought if there was only one, they wouldn't be able to screen and filter items coming into the swap shop.
Right.
So hopefully with two, you know, we're able to do that. And yes, people need to know to check because they can see things.
Because like, it's very easy to just simply walk in there and dump your stuff.
It's very easy and I, I, you know, and I think that we have had some, um,
Maybe not deliberately. I'm not saying people do.
No, but they just, they, I, yeah, I think that that's definitely certainly, and if we definitely, you know, the transition from Beth and Dave to other people has has had a tick ups.
And I'm going to admit, when I didn't know, I dropped something off that way. I mean, it was a useful item luckily, but still.
Right, no, I, I, and I think it's not an uncommon thing. And I think with big items, like, like when people bring a sofa or a table, that's pretty easy to catch, but if people have a box of random stuff, that can be a lot harder. They just like, oh, I'll just put it here and then.
Right, right. It's pretty good, as it is, anyway.
Susan, you, do you wanna update people about bear guidance?
Oh, so, um, for anybody who doesn't know, we've had several nuisance bears this summer in Monterey. Uh, there was one that broke into five houses. Um, so the, the D E P actually, Fish and Wildlife and D E P have sites up on, you can search easily and find it on the web about, you know, what to do to reduce the likelihood of bears being a problem. Um, first on the list would be to make sure you have bear-proofed garbage containment because it's basically an open invitation if you're, especially if you're a second homeowner and you're infrequently emptying your garbage, or you miss a Sunday and you leave it out for the week, you can pretty much guarantee the bears know it's there. If you have trash pickup and your trash pickup's on a Thursday and you leave on a Sunday and you leave your garbage out, knowing the trash pickup will be there, the trash won't be there when the trash pickup comes because the bears will know that your pickup day is Thursday and they'll come by on Wednesday and have a nice little chat down. Um, I also am recommending to people that we did catch one nuisance bear that was, they're pretty sure was the one that broke in. And maybe we located it.
The big, a big one. Was it the big one or the little one?
The big one. Um, I, I believe another bear was injured and had to be put down, but it wasn't the one that was breaking in.
Uh-huh.
I would recommend to people that if you have, um, lever handles on your doors because they're ADA compliant, I would strongly recommend you make sure you have a bolt or a lock on that door because, um, the bear that was breaking into homes actually knows how to open
Right.
lever doors.
Right.
So we changed our lever door handle to a knob. Of course, that won't fix it if they just walk in through your screen, but, um, I actually had an experience of sitting on my couch, watching a bear walk through my yard, pause in my driveway and stare at my door, pondering, oh, look, oh, look, that, that's one of those handles I can open. And I'm like, I real, I, I thought it was the small bear. I thought it was the banner's dog. And then I put my glasses on, I'm like, holy moly, and I jumped up and I pounded on the door. I'm like, get out of here. Oh, sorry, I was just passing through. Um, so I, I, uh, David went out and changed the door down the next day.
It's funny you're talking about this because I, I, I heard about the, the, the
Door handle.
The bear with the, you know, some bears are, uh, adept at using those handles. I have casement windows and I thought, well, you know, if I just leave them open in the crack, that's okay. But then when your dad told me about the bear, he's years, some time ago, behind Hoop I would Circle where there are some cliffs, I guess, going up, there was a big bear scaling those and holding on to a full-size barrel. I thought, you know what? If the bear can open a handle and has that kind of strength, they're gonna be able to get, pull my casement windows off.
They, they can, and they can come right through a screen, but a lot of times, they just don't bother.
They don't bother, but they may bother. So it's a.
Right, they may bother. So you just have to be aware of what's.
You have to be educated, right.
And, um, exactly, exactly. And so there's no reason to encourage them to do bad behaviors.
Well, the four things. I mean, you know, and then more houses being built, so therefore they have
Plus, if we teach them to forage in garbage and their mothers teach them to forage in garbage, then they don't actually know how to forage. So we, we want them to know how to forage and be wild bears, not dumpster divers. And that's it.
All right, that's the planned agenda. If there's any comments, questions? I see Amy has her hand up. Amy, can you unmute yourself or do we need to do that for you?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to know if there was any update on the general store.
Um, the, I mean, the town, uh, the town of Monterey, like the town government doesn't really have, you know, obviously doesn't own the store. I don't really have any updates more than anyone else. We've all seen work going on or not going on.
Intimately.
But they, there's no, they never applied to the town for like a liquor license or anything like that where it would be town related, or not recently. I'm sure they've done septic and building permitting and such, but I don't have any.
There's no news.
There's no news. So no one knows, just even through the grapevine, if they're planning on opening or if they've kind of, you know, stopped there?
They did have that meeting. Oh, it was a while ago now, months.
Yeah.
Months ago where they updated the public.
Before Memorial Day, or is it, I think so.
It was a, yeah, it was a while ago.
Cause they said they weren't gonna be open by Memorial Day at that meeting, so it must have been before Memorial Day.
Yeah. You can reach out to the owners, I don't know, but it's, we don't have any, the town doesn't have any, uh, any, you know, relation to the store in that way.
Yeah, I just.
Neither knowledge nor control.
Right, I understand that. I, I did miss that public meeting a month ago. Did the meeting, at the meeting, did they say anything of note?
I did not, I did not make it.
Neither did I, sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
On Cool Farm, thinking of, you know, access to supplies. I thought I had heard, I don't know if you've received any more formal updates, if they have reached their five hundred thousand.
I haven't covered.
I don't know.
And that means apparently that they can ramp up.
Actual beginning? That'd be.
Well, I don't know to begin, but to, in terms of fundraising for the rest of it, um, somehow that number makes a difference when you're so no, no updates there, okay.
Nope. Yeah, I, I mean.
I did see something on the community center programming for the month that there's a meeting about helping them to raise, um, to plan for some fundraisers, I think. I believe that's on the community center.
Yeah.
Towards the end of the month.
I don't think they're doing badly, but, you know, in terms of how far we are off.
But it would be great to help them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Let's see if I can find it.
I think we have a significant amount of money like that in your coffers. It makes it, it makes it easier to go out and, you know, people see you really serious if you have five hundred thousand. Don't quote me on that. Um, I have to confirm that with my Cool Farm sources.
Trying to see that event calendar.
In some sense, the roadside store is equally important to the general store in terms of those kinds of supplies and, you know, dining experiences.
It won't let me go. I just kept saying it's dangerous to go to the, eight. I, like, it just drives me crazy when it says that. Sorry about that. I can't find out when, when it is, but if you, if you go on your, if you go to the Monterey Community Event Calendar, towards the end of the month,
I'll take off.
there's some due going on about helping the Cool Farm place.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll pick, quick look.
Can you get on it? It just like refused me access and I just didn't wanna go with the permissions.
I do have another question. I'm not sure, I know that there's the, the Parks Committee. But in terms, so I know in the old days, of course, it was.
It's actually a commission. They're elected. This is why they're totally separate from us.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, they, they, they are elected and they have their own budget. They're like
They're elected. I forgot about that.
They're elected, correct.
Okay, they have their own budget. So in terms of whether the town has set aside money to potentially buy a piece of property to expand it or give access to, make create a proper program.
That would be all.
Entirely.
Right.
Okay.
It's a good question, though, and I know there were, at some point, some questions about the little triangle of land that, you know, where you have the overflow parking. There's the land that's across the street where the kayak racks are, but there's also that triangle where people parked like at Lake Fest in the past, so.
Right, right.
There's even some que, I like, I think it will finally ascertain who owns it.
Right, I, I remember.
Yeah, as for differing opinions about who owns it.
Right, right, right.
Um, but yeah.
I mean, that boat may have quote unquote, literally, you know, sailed in terms of pricing, but just wondering.
There also may not be just anybody who's willing to sell off a piece of land.
Right.
Right, like, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We all set with questions, comments?
All right.
Okay, then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll motion to adjourn the meeting and vote yes.
Second motion? Vote yes.
Meeting adjourned at twelve forty-seven P M.
Thank you for taking your Saturday time to do this.
Thank you for coming.
Happy I was able to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.